Call to order of the regular city council meeting for September 9th, 2019. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lisa, let the rule call show everyone is present. And we'll move on to the approval of the minutes, August 26, 2019.
I have a couple of things. Page five, in that the first paragraph body, it says Councilman Kibble stated is, it is, and there's an A in there, it should just be, take that A out, and that's all cleared Page six, the line that starts since MST acquired the property, they aren't not, so let's get rid of one of those negatives. Page seven, said, this is about two-thirds of the way down, "The current groundwater monitoring will continue long after the ordinance is in place." Is needs to be added in there? That's all right, that's all I have. If nobody's got anything else, I'd move the minutes as amended.
Lisa, just discussion. Lisa, did you have something?
I did. Page 11, under the closed session, the section number and the MCL numbers need to be corrected. I do recall to making that correction at the meeting. So, closed session pursuant to section eight, it should be small a, not e and h, and it should go additionally, the MCL number is fifteen dot two-six-eight, not one-twenty-five dot two-six-eight. Also, the a is there, but the and h should be removed.
Thank you. So, we have a motion and a second, all in favor of moving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Onto the approval of the bills.
I'll move the bills.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Approval of the attorney bills this evening.
I'll move the attorney bills.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Approval of tonight's agenda.
I'll move the agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. At this time, we will open the floor for public comment. Please remember to state your name and address, and do your best to please acknowledge the two-minute time limit. I will let you finish your idea, but we are trying to stay on that.
Good evening. My name is Dana Johnston. I live at 543 McMunn, South Lyon, Michigan, the great city of. I'm here to announce my candidacy. I have been a longtime member of the community. I have been a graduate of South Lyon schools, my siblings also, my children, and now, I'm so happy, my kindergartner is now going and attending South Lyon schools. This is a great community, and I also want to be more of a part of the community of South Lyon. This council has been standing for our community for many years, and I would love to have the opportunity to work with every one of the people on this council. This council does not just make all the motions and everything that go on with it, it's backed up by a city manager, police, fire, the people who work in the offices day-to-day, and I hope to bring something that I know to enhance the city council. I have been in college, but I have a background in art. I am not a lawyer, I am not a financier, I'm not a business person. I am a volunteer. I have volunteered my entire being here in this community, from running the first part of the Pumpkin Fest Committee, to the Memorial Day Parade, which I still am in charge of. I also have started a lot of things that are still going on in this community, and I would back them up. I believe in the people of this community. I believe where South Lyon is going. I want to be more a part of it. It has been an exciting thing to see happen. I remember when there was only a one light in town, and now we have several. I remember when we used to be the horse capital of Michigan. Sadly, that has gone by, but we have lots of great people and lots of great things happening, and I can't wait to be more a part of that. Thank you. Oh, and on September 16th, please come and join me at the Corner Cafe, I'm having a meet-and-greet, and I would love to have all of you there, come ask me questions and talk to me. Thank you and enjoy your evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Josie Kearns, 329 South Lyon Boulevard, South Lyon. I want to do this quickly. Four different artworks from the National Endowment for the Humanities Picturing America project have been installed as part of our Art and Commerce Project in the pocket park between the barber shop and the new kitchen place, as well as in front of the parking lot south of Farmer's Market just today those were put in. There are four more to be installed till the end of this week or early next week. And there's another part with poets writing about different businesses. We have furniture store poem, a jewelry store poem, a hardware store poem, a bicycle store poem, hopefully a bakery store poem, and the Corner Cafe is also included in this. We've been delayed because of the wonderful NASA photographs, but that's almost ending. And a shout-out to Amelia Yonker of the Salem-South Lyon District Library for helping us with that, and also the city manager, Paul Zelenek, and also Bob Donahue, Downtown Development Authority Director, who helped in negotiating that. We also, I also want to thank KV Sports, who donated ninety-five dollars for the metal plaques that are on those that identify the Michigan Council for the Arts and Cultural Affairs that gave us the wonderful grant, and the Cultural Arts Commission. We only paid twenty-five dollars for all those, and he was just wonderful doing that. And also a shout-out to one of our, to our commissioners, Ken Mahalik, who is a fabulous graphics designer, and right now is developing a brochure for the project, for the Art and Commerce Project, which will have all of your names in it as thank-yous, but I'm writing the copy right now. But he also did design the water tower, did the graphic design for that. And the wonderful thing about Ken is, I'm always changing, unfortunately, because of the nature of what I do, sometimes I have to change the content and add things that he didn't expect, and he always redoes the design and makes it look like it was always there. And I just want to thank him for that, I thought that, I think he's just amazing. Okay, and then a shout-out to Ron Brock and his team for making the amazing frames and deploying the art as well, and the creation, and he helped in the beginning of the creation of the grant proposal, and also installing it, and had, we had many conversations about that. Thanks to Jeff Robinson, co-owner of Third Monk Brewing, for hosting the Moonwalk Poetry Reading, great job, Jeff. And we will have a poetry walk with those poems in October, it's been okayed by MCACA. And Pumpkin Fest, if you volunteer four hours with us, with the Cultural Arts Commission, Joe Matuzik is going to do a presentation about, for free, if you do that, about how to set up your eBay account and how to sell on eBay. So, thank you very much. I think I got everyone.
Thank you, Josie.
Thank you, Josie.
Good evening. Ryan Lehrer, 716 Grand Court. Today, I had a chance to view Steve Kennedy's literature for the, his run for city council, and some things on there, there are some discrepancies that I'd like to clear up. As Josie mentioned, you mentioned about the water tower and graphic design. Unfortunately, that's an error. You didn't help with that, and I think it's terrible that you're putting that on your literature when Ken Mahalik did an amazing job at designing the water tower. Second of all, you're taking credit for snow plows and vehicles from DPW. You know, these are hard-working people that work in the city behind the scenes, and it's real funny that you're taking credit for these things that are going on, yet with the fire department, DPW, water, you know, there's other people that have done this hard work that aren't being recognized, and, and you're, you're not even mentioning them, you're, it's like you're taking the full credit, and that, that's just not right for the people. You know, the, why don't you recognize all the city employees that helped get that truck, or helped get the snowplow, or helped get the life-saving device like Chief Vogel and Deputy Ware? You know, if you want to be on council, tell the truth. Truth is important. Honesty is important. If you want to be in public office, I suggest you start now. And I'll tell you another thing. The other thing that really upsets me is that you do not have any consideration for other people. I was at the senior coffee, and I asked you twice if I could get a pamphlet, and you directly ignored me, and didn't answer me, which was extremely rude. And that's somebody that's running for public office? You know, that's something to think about.
Thank you.
Carol Sedelko, I live on Raleigh Court in Colonial Acres. Just about a year ago at this time, I spoke at this open forum, and I was very vocal about, I felt it was time and the responsibility of the city council to do something about that green building in our downtown. So, I'm just thrilled to see it. In fact, tonight, when we came by, the green paint is gone, it's wonderful. I want to give credit where credit's due, I don't know, I don't know who was responsible for getting somebody there, but it's wonderful. About the same time, I did mention to the only council member that I know about another eyesore, and that was a small abandoned home at the end of Stryker Street where you turn into the cemetery, and before I knew it, the house was gone. So, again, credit where credit's due, thank you so much.
Wasn't me. Wasn't me.
Thank you, Carol. All right, we will close public comment, and we will move on to the approval of tonight's consent agenda. I know, Councilmember Kennedy, you had something, you're good? Councilmember Prezian, go ahead, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I mean, it's nothing that's going to hold anything up, I just wanted to make sure that we properly thank Keith Bradley. So, I don't know if we need to pull that from the agenda, but I do want to make sure we make a statement on the record thanking him for his time and his efforts on the planning commission.
I was planning on mentioning it in my council comments, but if you'd like to take it off the-
No, that's a great place for it, never mind.
All right, with that being said-
I'll move the agenda.
Consent agenda approval? Councilmember Kurtswell?
Yes, I'd like to move all agendas that are on the consent agenda for tonight.
My second.
We have a motion and a second. Councilmember Richards, do you have any comment?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Regarding the South Lyon Eve, New Year's Eve event-
I'm sorry. I'm going to learn that one day.
I recognize that Mr. Heinonen is promoting his business and enhancing the community's atmosphere, and he does a lot for the community, okay? Just the fact that we didn't see this whole plan until just recently, at least I didn't, okay, till it came in the package.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Kurtswell, what is your point of order?
Thank you. If you're going to have discussion on an item that is listed on the consent agenda, then you need to make a motion to move it off of the consent agenda. It then becomes part of the agenda, but it's so, so you have to decide what you want to do.
Yep, that's fair. So, Councilmember Richards, so if you'd like to make a motion on that-
I will make a motion that we move item three off of consent agenda, and put it at the end of new business under three. Is that, am I aligned with that?
I'll second that.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to amend my motion.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move the consent agenda, which now contains item one and item two. Item one is resignation of Keith Bradley, number two is road closures and event hours for Cool Yule, those two items. So, my motion's being amended.
I'll second that.
So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Councilmember Kurtswell. At this point, we'll move on to the discussion in downtown. Mr. Donahue?
Quick items on the report that you received from Paul. Things are moving quite well. Thank you for the vote on the Cool Yule. We'll have more details next council meeting. Just need to get over that little hurdle. The distribution of the business survey went well, extremely well. We only had two returned that we know of, and so we hopped on it and changed those addresses, got them back out. So, we'll keep you up to date on the progress there, but it's on schedule. The couple of dates for events coming up, the kids' trick-or-treat event, October 24th, downtown, that'll be on council agenda for the road closure. The ladies' night out, November 15th, there will be a road closure on East Lake. And I want to, I want to thank the Cultural Arts Commission for all their efforts to bring art downtown and throughout the community. And I know it's been an exciting year, because we formed a partnership last year, and all the members have really hopped on that. We're trying to, we're seeing a lot more art downtown, and in the community, and so we really hope that we can continue to take that partnership forward. But thank you so much, Cultural Arts. That's all I have.
Councilmember Walton, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, Bob, years ago, when we were getting ready to knock down that building at the corner of, I believe it's Caddy and Pony Trail, next to Heinonen, and we made it into a parking lot, I spoke to a council member at that time about, instead of turning that into a parking lot, making that a gathering spot for our city. Put in a cement pad, bring in some artwork from the cultural arts, I'm sure they could get us a great sculpture, put in a fire pit, place to sit. We've got all these people that we encourage to come downtown and walk around, and I would like to give them a really nice gathering spot. Not just, we took out our gazebo, so now I kind of look around town, and yes, we have businesses, we have places to sit, but I would like to see a gathering spot for our city. Something along the lines of, you know, like I said, a nice gas or electric fire pit, kind of like what some of these other communities around us have. You know, let's, let's decorate our city. We've got a great cultural arts who have done a wonderful program, bringing all this colorful artwork and amazing things, let's, let's keep that going.
In response to that, the DDA at its last meeting created, in fact, we have to set a meeting date, an Economic Development Committee to look at properties available, vacant properties in the DDA district, and that was number one on the list.
Excellent.
And so, there are pieces of those ideas that you mentioned have been discussed, as well as potential farmer's market, sale of the property. So, we are looking at all that. And so, that Economic Development Committee, as part of the Main Street Program, is tasked to look at those parcels, what could be their better use for the future be. So, we'll get on that.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I got some.
Councilmember Kibble, and then I'm going to come over to you, Carl.
There was some mention about the language for the mural ordinance. I'd love to get a copy of whatever is being pitched to planning.
Sure. Sure. I think-
I don't want to wait until everything is all said and done, and then, you know, if there's some misgiving, then you have to try to amend it.
Sure. We're following through on the, you know, properly with the planning commission, looking at amendments to the zoning ordinance.
That's fine. I'd just like to see the language that they're-
Understand. So, I think we're going to-
Yeah, I thought council has already provided a copy of that, but if they're not, we'll make sure we'll get it to you.
Yeah, I don't have it.
Councilmember Richards?
Bob, today's the first day that somebody on the vets' club, an officer, has contacted me regarding questions about the rock, okay? And as long as I've known everything about it, everything's already set up and, and pretty well in order, okay, from what I've been read. I just wanted to, if you could give us the latest update on the situation with the removal and replacement of the rock.
Well, if, if you, how it evolved was that a member of the American Legion approached me when I was first with the city, and asked if we could have a better monument for the future. That person happened to be Harvey Waddell, and another gentleman who I don't even remember his name that day at the coffee shop. I've seen him, I don't remember his name. So, so at that time, we looked at designs to expand a monument, and we looked at where the Blue Star Memorial is, down by the Firehouse Bell. And we took that design immediately, we started off with the American Legion, then we went to the veterans, and we had tremendous support by both groups. Did we have an actual approval? No, but we had tremendous support, because they asked us to then take it through the approval process and come back to them. So, we did. We went to the Parks and Rec, we went to the Historical Society, we went to the Planning Commission, and then we went to city council, and we received unanimous approvals at every step.
Yeah.
And I thought we were at about a ninety-five to ninety-nine percent support level at the VFW and the Legion post. So, it became a funding situation. The plans were not elaborate, but still raising thirty to forty thousand dollars was not going to be easy. It was not a priority. It was a priority, but not the highest priority. So, after tackling and getting to know people in the community, and getting most of the forty thousand dollars of value donated through in-kind services, we've been able to receive some cash donations for the plan. The site plan itself hasn't changed, but the position of the flagpoles around the cement has changed. But, so, we've made great gains, and then I've reported back five times to the VFW, and, and the last time I spoke to them in May, they asked me to come up with some kind of a document that would guarantee that the monument faced the road, because the initial drawing had it flipped. It was, it was just a, an error by the, the HRC person that did the drawing. And we would certainly face the monument to the street, and that the brick pavers with the names would be in front of it again, as it is in the current location. And I assured them that we would do that. So, that was their issue at that time. And the other item that we pursued at their request, they said if it was moved, they would want to sell the property if they owned it. So, we verified that the city owns the property. We verified that with open county equalization, register of deeds at the county, and so it is owned by the city, always has been. And so, it would be going from one city property to another to allow the expansion, to create a better atmosphere that where people don't have to stand in the street, which is, can be a danger, noise is an issue for ceremonies. Also, I think the competitive nature is that our community wants to do things first class, and I know that Lyon Township is proposing a large, rather elaborate veterans memorial, and I think we want to respect our veterans as much as that. And also, I think there was motivation that the wonderful War Dog Memorial is certainly wonderful, and yet it presents a challenge too. We should do something for our human veterans as much here in this community. So, we had a wonderful plan that's received tremendous support, and now that we've answered a few questions, and we've verified the ownership, and we have all the in-kind contributions, we'd love to move forward, and we're, we're very close to the point in time where we have to give the signal to all those folks that we will take their forty thousand and make it happen.
Councilmember Prezian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bob, I have a quick question for you about the survey. Is there a specific timeframe that the businesses have to get this back to you, or to the city?
We had a deadline, I believe, of September 30th, I don't have the timeline, September 30th.
September 30th, and then, just out of curiosity, can you walk me through, they mail it back to the city, and then from the city, where does it go?
It's done by Survey Monkey, it's electronic. Now, they had the option, if, if we didn't, we wanted to try to keep it all steered towards Survey Monkey, but they did have that option if they weren't able, if they had some problem where they could not use the online format.
When it comes, when the feedback gets back to the city, though, who is filtering through it? Who's reviewing it? Are someone keeping a chart or some type of organized form where they can keep feedback?
Well, we'll work with Survey Money to, to look at the data, and to glean it, and to gather information from it, and then we're going to continue to have the work group at that point, and, and, you know, put it into a format where it can report it, be reported to you folks and anybody else.
Great. So, not to put any pressure on and not to corner you into a timeline, when do you think council would get a report like that?
It's on the timeline, I think.
October, November?
I don't remember.
It was sometime in October, but it will be still while you were still on city council.
That's what I wanted to know.
Okay. Sorry. Yeah, I thought it was on there, I thought it was October or November, but yeah.
That works, I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Anyone else with anything for Bob tonight? Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
On to new business this evening.
Item number one, purchase of new F-350 with plow package for DPW.
Council, DPW has budgeted for a new 2020 F-4350 with a plow package. Purchases is accounted for in the 2019-20 budget under account number 641-959-300, the Vehicle Equipment Replacement Fund. The, this truck will be built in, in November and be available for early use in 2020, and we've received three bids, and Varsity Ford is the low bid. We have information there regarding the bids that came in. Possible course of action is approve or not approve the purchase of a new 2020 Ford F-350 SD with Western MVP3 plow package from Varsity Ford, the amount of forty thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty cents. Doug Barney's here to answer any questions you may have regarding the equipment.
Councilmember Kurtswell?
I'll go ahead and make the motion, get it on the floor. I move to approve the purchase of a new 2020 Ford F-350 SD with Western MVP3 plow package from Varsity Ford in the amount of forty thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty cents, from account number 641-953.300, Vehicle Equipment Replacement Fund.
My second.
All right, discussion? Councilmember Kibble?
Just a comment, I was really happy to see that, that Varsity was such a substantial amount lower than the competition, so that was, that's really helpful for us, so, yeah.
It's pretty much volume-based, I'm pretty sure.
I'm really glad that you guys reached out to that third, third bid.
Yeah.
Councilmember Richards?
Thank you. Bob, Doug, I mean, okay, I'm glad to see we're going with Fords, okay, because they're the most rugged for the job. This is a three-quarter ton chassis?
F-350, yes.
F-350, okay, that's three-quarter.
Super duty, yes.
That's, no, that's a one-ton then, isn't it, with duals?
I don't know if it has duals, I don't think it has dualies on it. I don't think it does, don't quote me on it, I don't know.
Well, this F-350 is supposed-
There's a picture of it here, though.
It's got the package for the special suspension. Yeah, I see it, yeah. Now, you know where I live. I saw a very large plow on a flatbed, heading south past my house, and that was a nine-footer, at least, okay? That's for a big truck. Is, is this truck big enough to push a plow of that size?
No, I don't believe it would be.
Then that plow's going to something else, or else it's one of, another vehicle of yours, or, or maybe some other contractor.
Not for sure.
Okay, all right, but I just wondered, okay, how big a plow you could put on the F-350?
I believe it's an eight-foot standard.
Eight-foot plow?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, lost my place there. So, we have a motion by Councilmember Kibble, excuse me, Kurtswell, supported by Councilmember Walton, to approve the purchase of a new 2020 Ford F-350 with Western MVP3 plow package from Varsity Ford in the amount of forty thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty cents, from account number 641-959.300, Vehicle Equipment Replacement Fund. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes.
Good work.
Thanks for being here, Doug.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good motion. Good motion.
On to new business number two this evening. Sanity Sewer Evaluation Study Phase One.
As part of a multi-year plan to inspect our infrastructure, the city has gone out for bid for sanitary sewer inspection. Phase one of the project is to inspect and clean sewers in the northwest quadrant of the city. A total of five bids were received, ranging from thirty-four thousand three hundred and fifty dollars and fifty cents to sixty-nine thousand seven hundred and sixty-two dollars. The low bid was submitted by Pipe Tech Infrastructure Services LLC of Livonia. The funding from the project will come from Water and Sewer Professional Services account, five nine two five five seven eight zero one. Attached documents from HRC explaining the project and the bid tab information is attached. Possible course of action, approve or not approve the award of Phase One of the Sanitary Sewer Evaluation Study to Pipe Tech Infrastructure Services LLC of Livonia in the amount of three, thirty-four thousand three hundred and fifty dollars and fifty cents.
Councilmember Kibble?
I'll make the motion to approve the award of Phase One of the Sanitary Sewer Evaluation Study to Pipe Tech Infrastructure Services LLC of Livonia, Michigan, in the amount of thirty-four thousand three hundred and fifty dollars and fifty cents. The Water and Sewer Account Number five nine two five five seven eight zero one.
One second.
Question.
Hold on. We have a motion by Councilmember Kibble, supported by Councilmember Walton. Discussion? Councilmember Richards?
Uh, Paul, I have a question. We're all aware of, of, uh, the northwest quarter of town and, uh, the sewer problems and everything, and we've talked about it too. From, from way before I was ever on council, it's been discussed that, uh, HRC was, was going to be doing the survey of this whole matter in hand, hand-to-hand with the RQ, which is now called EAGLE, okay? So I was quite surprised to see that they're injecting a subcontractor to this. Now, I'm not in a position to know, is this the way this would have always worked out or is this a new wrinkle? It's, it's new to me.
No, this is not a new wrinkle. HRC would have never been the company that would have been cleaning and televising sanitary sewer. They would have been writing the specifications and assisting with us in reviewing the actual te, the televising and the material that comes out of the inspection services or this Phase One to ascertain what pipes need to be repaired and what pipes need to be replaced. And this would be part of the first phases of, part of capital improvement plan is to do this work before we do any sort of paving work or we develop a paving plan, you know, for the city. So that's why we're going to be doing quadrants of the city.
Okay. If we're going to do this, then something's really going to go on this time when we approve this.
Yes, and this, yeah, right. And this work will start, I believe, within ten days of signing the contract.
Okay. Long, long what we're doing. We've been waiting for it. Thank you.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Just a quick one, Paul. Do you have a sense of what the turnaround for getting all the information garnered and then acting on that?
The project, I believe, is going to be completed by the end of December and then the review of the material and then we put that together and make a review and start to see what work needs to be done. And then the actual repair work, uh, would most likely be done in next year's budget for that particular quadrant. And the discussions that I've had with HRC and, and looking forward is to try to accelerate this plan, um, within the next couple of years so we can get it all done within a few years instead of waiting a full four years to get everything completed so we can start in the other phases of capital improvements, storm sewer, road paving, things such as that.
In this sector or just broad-based?
Well, broad-based city-wise. And, and just recently, and I'll, and I'll add to that, the Pacer study was to begin this week also, and that's evaluating all the roads within the city.
Right. Well, that's good. Do you have a sense of when that'll be complete?
I can't give you a timeframe. I'll, I'll, I'll try to get that for you, though.
I don't recall the last time we had done it, what the, I was thinking it was like a month, but I don't remember specifically.
I'll try to get that answer for you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Richards?
Uh, thank you. Uh, Paul, okay, are these people, which we've never heard of before, okay? We're going to prove them, okay? Are they going to come before council and talk to us?
We would have probably HRC come before council. These people are the individuals that do the heavy lifting, the work that's actually out there in the field. They compile the data with our engineers and then will come back and potentially make a presentation about what we found out there and what the next steps are in getting some of this, our repair work done.
Okay. Next question. Okay, we've committed money over the years on this, okay? Budget to budget, okay? What happens to that money? Is it rolling over and keeping in our capital improvement fund?
This is actually from the Water and Sewer Fund, so money we're using for this inspection will come specifically out of that fund. The way the budgets work, water doesn't, our funds do not necessarily roll over into the next year. Each July first is technically a new budget, a new starting point.
Okay. Is everybody on board with this? Fine, fine with me. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a note here, um, Councilmember Walton, did you second that?
I think this, Mr. Kennedy, Councilmember Kennedy and I both did it at the same time.
Okay.
It doesn't matter to me.
That's, that's fine. I will correct that. I apologize. We don't have an Olympic timer up here. We just kind of go as, as what I hear, so.
Could I just make one, one comment, just for Carl's sake? This is from the enterprise fund. That's what all that stuff, that's what it's there for, so.
For the clarification, Councilmember Kibble. Any further discussion on this? Okay. We have a motion by Councilmember Kibble, supported by Councilmember Kennedy, to approve the award of Phase One of the Sanitary Sewer Evaluation Study to Pipe Tech Infrastructure Services LLC of Livonia, Michigan, in the amount of thirty-four thousand three hundred and fifty dollars and fifty cents. Water and Sewer Account Number five nine two dash five five seven dash eight zero one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. On to new business number three this evening. This was moved from the consent agenda and is, has to do with South Lyon Eve and South Lyon's New Year's Eve event. Thanks for being here, Jeff.
Good evening, yes, no problem.
So, Councilmember Richards, I believe you had?
Yes.
A comment, so feel free to start us off.
Just some comments and concerns, okay? Chief Solwix in favor of, of the site plan? And, um, personally, I haven't heard about this myself, Paul. Uh, that much. And the map that we got here, where it closes off all of McCatty Street up to the corner of Washington, I had not heard about that, that part of it, okay?
Okay.
But what happens, has it, have the people, there's people living over there in our senior housing, the city's own property, where the handicapped live, kid or corner, right, right there. And there's one residence on Washington Street on the other side, and the rest is commercial, of course, active faith. And there's some people over here on this side that are rental tenants and they're usually low-income people, okay?
Okay.
Have they been notified? Are they aware that we're going to have live music and a big party on New Year's Eve, past one o'clock, uh, right on their doorstep?
Not past one o'clock. It ends at one o'clock.
Okay, I'm just, I, somebody's.
Yeah, we wouldn't go, we wouldn't go beyond that. Absolutely not.
Okay, good buddy. Somebody's going to complain about this. That's happened before in our community and they, just like the, the people came to me about Blues and Brews, uh, the way the sound went this past month, you know? Uh, it's an administrative issue, not council. Go ahead, Bob.
I was going to say, the reason there hasn't been any publicity, because, excuse me, we needed, I mean, an audio.
Oh, no, you're fine.
Um, fighting for the microphone. Um, we needed to have this approval before we can publicize the event. Um, and, and we didn't want to get any PR out there unless City Council was in favor of this and we move forward. That's why you haven't heard about it.
I, I got some more.
I know. Go ahead.
Explain, please explain the security?
Yes.
That you have planned. As way I read it, okay?
Yes.
It says the same company that, that works with Pumpkin Fest for their barricades and everything and is going to be the same one that, that you're going to employ for this event?
No, the event is similar to Pumpkin Fest. Your city police force will do the security for the event.
Okay.
Uh, police officers will be paid, the city will be paid to do that security as they are for Pumpkin Fest and the Blues, Brews and Brats. The barricades, uh, I only mentioned it in the agenda note that it is similar to the Pumpkin Fest. The barricades will be brought out by the DPW, as is the case with those other events.
Okay. Uh, this is a first run on something like this and I'm in favor, as Councilman Walton has said, about, uh, using the facility. It's our, it's, it beholds us to, to do something on that piece of property, certainly, for the benefit of the community.
Absolutely.
But, uh, a New Year's Eve party, uh, sort of caught me off guard. There's no way you can guarantee the, the weather or anything. It's sometimes New Year's, that time is tremendously bad, you know?
Well, the good thing about that is, we've, we thought about that. After the tree lighting last year, we learned a lot. And what I mean by that is that we now have, we have tents on that space, both on our patio and that, essentially that green space will be covered by essentially a tent. Now, that tent is also conditioned. Manufacturer I represent has, has donated heating units to heat that tent. So we, both for Cool Gill and for South Lyon Eve, we are going to condition these tents. Because again, we just have no idea what the weather could bring. And we just, we can't be caught off guard.
Okay. Have you got planning for parking? If, if the whole street's cluttered and nobody's going to the tube mill, where are the people going to park, uh, for this deal?
Well, we've got a lot of spots here in the downtown that I think, in terms of parking, but I think, at least from some of the feedback I have, I think it's going to be a lot of the city folks, they tend to walk in, in terms of, just to play it safe. It, um, you know, it's hard to say, but there is a lot of city parking here available for folks. I just think you're going to have to walk a bit, like any city event, excuse me. But it's, it's just really important that we bring people to the downtown. This is another way to do that. And, uh, somebody has to kind of go first on some of this stuff and I don't mind doing that.
Okay. I, I hope it works, but you realize.
Me too.
You realize?
Really.
New Year's Eve, guys are going to be killing a fifth at home, okay? And then coming up to your place and chasing it with beer, to, and walking all the way. And that's going to happen, okay?
Well, one of the things we talked about is that we are, everybody's serving here. Some, a problem that we've seen in the past with some of the events is people being overserved. So one of the things we are going to do, that anybody that serves beer in the tent is going to be trained properly. So we don't see that. So if we, we can identify that. Because that, you're absolutely right, that this could happen and, and I, I just can't have that. That's just not acceptable to me. So our job is to prevent that from happening.
Okay, I'm done.
I believe Councilmember Walton had something first?
Yes, thank you. I just want to say I'm actually very excited about this. I first learned about it on Facebook a few weeks ago, so, hate to say it, Bob, but the information is out there.
But we did leak a bit, finally.
Right, right.
We, we had to for some timing issues, but yes.
And semi, semi unofficial.
Yeah, it's pretty exciting. It's, it's a great way to bring people to our downtown, so I, I thank you for it. If there's anything that I can do, please reach out to me. I'd like to maybe help in some way.
Brave. We definitely need volunteers.
There's always volunteer opportunities.
Okay.
I think, uh, Councilmember Prezian always is out here asking for volunteers, so maybe she can ramp up a few people for us for this one, too.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kurtzwell?
My question is, it says it's going to be on a forty-foot tall pole. Um, does that fit our ordinance? I didn't think.
It's a temporary pole. It's a temporary pole that'll be erected on the roof of the building. A very lightweight, light-duty pole to hold a very lightweight ball, but it'll be over the building structure. So it, um, yes, it'll, it's actually about thirty feet, give or take, on the roof of the building.
Okay, because, because you might need a, I don't know. I, it's been a while, but I do recall when I was on the Planning Commission that there was a height restriction to any structure in the city. So that's, that's my only concern. I just want it, I just want to, um, issue it up early?
Yes, that's great.
So that you sort of take a look at it and if it's in violation of the ordinance, even if it's temporary, you might need a variance from the CBA.
We can look at that.
Just an issue to spot.
That's a great point. That's a great point. Yeah. Oddly, the, even the tree wouldn't have met that standard.
Right, right. The, the tree would still be taller, so.
But it's a good point. We'll check. Just so we cover, cover our bases. Good, sure.
Councilmember Prezian, go ahead.
Thank you for coming out. My act, my question's actually toward the city attorney, but, hang on just a second.
Sure.
Lisa, since this is a city event in a sense that the DDA is collaborating with a nonprofit and money is being filtered through the nonprofit to pay for the tree, is that, is that going to be an issue? Because it's my understanding that the Michigan Constitution states that you can't use public funds for private purpose, but is this going to be flipped?
But, but are you using city funds?
So if the DDA is funding this in any way, if we're collaborating and there's funds coming from the city, that could be, I guess, an issue of optics? Is that, or I guess that's my question, would that be an issue of optics?
As long as you're not using city funds to purchase, um, tree or anything for a private event, then it's not an unlawful expenditure.
Okay, so hang, hang on one second. Back to you guys. So, sorry, go ahead.
It, it is a partnership between the DDA. The DDA will spend its money in the public right-of-way, promotions and marketing, as we do for all DDA events. And so it, the model really is very similar to Pumpkin Fest.
Perfect. And that's what I wanted to make sure we clarify, because if there's an optics issue and that comes back, at least we have it on the record, that these are two separate, the DDA is collaborating, but they're not funding.
Correct. And none of the, whatever, uh, the DDA would fund would be directly to a vendor. The funds from the DDA, um, uh, the, the police officers aren't going to be paid by the, uh, foundation, the, the funding, I don't know, it's going to be just like Pumpkin Fest. I don't know. I think to look at all the paperwork at Pumpkin Fest would be the.
Well, with Pumpkin Fest, they're five oh one, six three.
Five oh one, six three, right.
But, um, the city doesn't fund anything. We just do the road closures and things of that nature. But just making sure for this, because we have, the, the DDA is a part of it and then we have the nonprofit, but the nonprofit is only to fund the tree. Anything from the beer tent goes to the tree, right?
Everything goes to the events as a whole, any events that the nonprofit manages. So the primary focus is the tree.
Perfect.
Now, the hope is that if, if at some point it's never not in a deficit, then, uh, then we can do, our hope is that we can do summer events, we can do all sorts of other events as time moves forward. But, uh, these are some of our mainstay events that we're hoping to, to push forward through, you know, for the, the next conceivable future.
So I'm a hundred percent on board. I love it. I think it's a great idea and I think it's excellent for the community. We need more stuff like this, more events like this. So this is fantastic. I just want to make sure we're not commingling any funds when it could look bad that someone might say, well, hang on a second, we have city funding, city collaborated event going toward private functions.
And right now, we've set it up a way to where the DDA funds, the small budget that we do have in the DDA stays completely separate from this, other than it's an endorsed event. Right now, there is no money moving from one to another.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you. Sorry, go ahead.
Events in downtowns are always a partnership between sponsors, businesses, and the city and/or our DDA. And so this is a DDA event every bit as much as the foundation's event.
Right, but I guess the concern-
It's a downtown event.
The concern would be if you're funding anything privately. So if the tree is being funded, if the tree is a private property, it's from a private source, and we're using public funds to pay for the tree.
No, we're not paying for the tree itself. We're only paying for the promotions and marketing of a DDA event, or, or items in the public right-of-way.
And that, that comes across clear now, that you said it. In the, in the literature, it didn't come across clear. So that's why I just want to make sure for the record that it's clear, we have two separate fundings that are going on here. So that way, again-
Partnership. It is, with a new event and with a much more aggressive DDA, and these are great questions to get through, but we are not the first community to do these things. And so I think there's good precedent to help us all look back.
And, like you said, with Pumpkin Fest, Pumpkin Fest is a prime example. If it's being the same way, if the structure's the same, then I don't see an issue with it at all.
But I think, I think the questions are good, because we'll make sure we do it properly.
Hey, thank you, guys.
Yep, thank you.
Dan? Councilmember Kittle?
I think this is very cool. This kind of hearkens to the ICE Festival of Plymouth and things, you know, where private places have tents set up, that, is it EG and Hicks or something, that it was downtown there? You know, they set up a heated tent and have bands playing and all that kind of stuff. This is sort of commensurate with that. I would like Lisa to end up making sure that there's some kind of language drawn up that she can go through, just to make sure all the i's are dotted, t's are crossed-
Sure.
-just so, so we don't end up finding ourselves trying to pedal back down the road. It'd be good to have that all taken care of up front. The, the DDA, I mean, obviously, these event things are funded in, in DDA funding often, so I don't see where that's a problem. But I don't want to end up finding out that the foundation might end up creating a hic, hiccup someplace in, you know, throwing money into that to try to assist the, the idea of this, this event. Because I think this could end up being our Punxsutawney fill, you know, for Christmas. No, I mean, I'm quite, being quite serious, this, this could turn into a longstanding real event. So we should try to nurture, nurture it so that it is successful and we can hang onto it.
Agreed.
I would, I would like to ask that in fairness, because I know it, it's apt to come out at a DDA board meeting, possibly this week or in committee meetings. I think the same scrutiny and review of how we, the process should apply to Pumpkin Fest and other events.
Absolutely.
So I think a review of how that's done. So if we, if we create a model that's perfectly acceptable for a new event, and if there happens to be a negative that's not being fulfilled by Pumpkin Fest, it would be a help to them, to let them get squared away, so they don't run into any issues either.
It'd be nice to try to identify anything that you have a misgiving with that's existing in any of the events that exist now.
I, I really don't have a misgiving, but I'm just saying that these are new questions-
Because Pumpkin Fest or the models-
...asked for everyone.
Pumpkin Fest or the models of these communities that you referenced, that already do stuff in this vein, let's look at their language. Let's not start from scratch. Let's recreate stuff.
Councilmember Friesian?
I completely agree. I think everything should be consistent. We should have a process and procedure in place for everybody across the board. I couldn't agree more. If there is a standard operating procedure that's out there that we are not aware of and we could adopt, more power to South Lion, if somebody knows of it. Absolutely.
We can, we'll get on that. Good suggestion. Absolutely.
Good call.
Lisa, go ahead.
I'm happy to work with the city and, and, and the DDA director on coming up with, making sure at least that we've got a checklist and everything is being followed through. I just ask maybe if, if Bob, you can give me the dynamics of this event and who's sponsoring what, just so that we have all of the information to make a better informed decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Walton?
Thank you. You know, I'm just gonna throw this out there. I know we're going into 2020. I really hope Flora can throw together a little dance class for the roaring twenties, and we can all be out at your event dancing away.
Hey, that'd be great. That'd be great. That'd be a lot of fun. I love it.
I'll be checking their catalog.
Have to dust off my zoot suit.
Great.
Anything else?
All right. So we're just looking for a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the New Year's Eve event.
A second.
Motion hasn't been made.
So we have a motion?
To read the whole verbiage?
Yeah.
I apologize. Let me read the whole verbiage here. I approve the event and road closures for December 31st and January 1st, South Lion Eve event and activities, including a ball drop at midnight to bring in the New Year's Eve, and one, the closure of West McCaddy Street from South Lafayette to South Washington Street from 5:00 p.m. on Tuesday, December 31st, to 2:00 a.m. Wednesday, January 1st, 2020, for the inaugural South Lion Eve, New Year's Eve event in downtown South Lion, and two, a beer tent from 8:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m., and three, live music from 9:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes? Thanks, Jeff. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much.
We'll move on to the budget this evening. Councilmember Kurzweil?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have an article that I will include with the minutes tonight. This one just fell in my lap. It's from the Detroit News. It's from August 31st, and it's been an issue that I've been talking about, let me see, for almost four years. Michigan cities must tackle pension debt. And I'm just gonna read the first sentence, that unfunded liabilities, including pensions, remain one of the biggest drags on communities in Michigan. So I would encourage that maybe after the election, we could get a committee. I'd like to sit on it and begin exploring some options, and let's take a look at it. For a small city, you know, $5 million is a lot of money. I did do some research into Oakland County to find out how they took care of their unfunded pension liability, and Oakland County bonded out. So even though they don't have any more unfunded pension liability issues, there is a bond that still, I have to call the treasurer and ask him what that outstanding debt is, but that's what they did. That's how they took care of it. So right now, we already have a bond that's placed for our water and sewer department. And so I don't know how feasible bonding out would be, but it's like anything in the economy, what goes up comes down. So even though we're in a really good economic climate right now, that may not be the case, you know, 18 months from now. So you'll need to plan ahead for that unfunded pension, because it rises in periods when you have recessions. So that's my comment on the unfunded pension. Thank you.
Anyone else with anything on the budget this evening? All right. We'll move on to the manager's report. Paul?
We had a couple of discussion items. One, we already talked about the business survey. Bob already got that out. We'll make sure we get that information as quickly as we can to council. I believe the mural, there should have been mural language that should have been emailed to council members a couple of weeks ago in the manager's report, so please check that. If you did not get that, I'll make sure I do email that back out.
It was in your report?
It was in my, in my report of August 30th. So if you did not get that, please let me know, and I'll resend that back out.
I think that might have been one of the documents. I had trouble opening. Okay.
Okay, and that was draft language, so I'll make sure I get that, too. Nothing's been changed since then, or will be changed prior to it going before Planning Commission. We're still working with the Veterans Memorial, as Bob has mentioned. We're trying to get some of the veterans groups together to make sure everybody is on board and try to hear all their concerns regarding that. Also, I want to comment to Carol, the resident from Colonial Acres. I just want to say, anything else you have or want to have happen, done in the city, please let me know about it, because it appears that you have the Midas Touch. Anything you've talked about happens here in the city. So if you want to get a chance to talk together about something else, please let me know. I'd be happy to meet with you. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Paul. Does anyone have anything for Paul? All right, great. We'll move on to our second public comment. Please remember to state your name and address. Okay, we'll close public comment. And it's not on the agenda, but we're going to Chief's Corner. We'll start with Chief Vogel tonight.
Evening. Two quick things. Just an update on the Jaws. I've been in contact with the dealer. The set is being sent back to the manufacturer. Since it's a demo, they're gonna look at it, make sure that, when it comes to us, that it's usable, and so we get our full warranty. Second thing is, for those of you who read Paul's manager report, a couple of reports ago, I mentioned that I was doing a study about the opiate crisis, I think, we're having in this city. And I owe a lot to Chief Solvik, Brienne, and Sergeant Faunt. They got, I did a lot of calling. I got a lot of numbers, and I think the numbers were a little more shocking than I thought. The reason this came about, excuse me, we had a call last week or two weeks ago, that I noticed that it was bothering some of my staff. And I thought, this has really been a toll on our staff and our budgets. For those who don't know, we pay $141 every time we use Narcan. And so this is why I began this venture into looking into this. It's been a lot of work, and I've got a lot more to do. So I will keep you updated. Any questions?
Councilmember Kurzweil?
I spent Labor Day weekend with a bunch of union guys, from Chicago plumbers and firemen, and very, very informative weekend. Great, great group of guys. I learned a lot about the Jaws for Life. And so my question is, the Jaws of Life that you have purchased, is that the electric battery, or is it the hydraulic with the-
Battery.
Okay.
We went with the battery. It is quicker to use. They were lighter. Most of the staff were familiar with them from other departments. The surrounding departments enjoyed them or use them, and that's why we went with that.
My understanding from the conversations was that when you have the Jaws of Life with the hydraulic on it, lines, it restricts how far you can go.
Yes.
Whereas with the electric battery-charged one, you don't have a restriction.
Correct. Well, the, the unit that had the catastrophic failure was portable, but it's extremely heavy, extremely limited. We had an incident off of Mill Street, and we had a hard time getting it inside. So I think this is why we went this way. It is better technology, and it's just what we felt would really do good for us.
Okay, well, I just want to make sure that's what we were getting.
Exactly.
Okay. They were very informative. Great, great, great group of people. Thank you.
Councilmember Walton?
Chief Vogel, I just want to thank you and Chief Solvik for your special attention to the opiate crisis. It is a major problem, not only for our city, but many cities all across America. I know that I, it's very dear to my heart right now. My daughter lost a friend over the weekend, and-
It affected us, too.
Yeah.
It has been, I noticed that it had an effect on some mental health issues in the fire department. I've insured all our employees. We have employee system, employee assistant program here.
Yes. Thank you.
And the, the numbers were surprising. Now, that was outside the city, but it's another student that has graduated from South Lion High School, and it's just been struggling, and, and our heart goes out to him and his family, because it seemed to be, he was a pretty great person.
He was.
So I know that two of my staff know him really well, and so they were having tough times Sunday, so.
Councilmember Kittle?
I just wanted to say, you're getting advice. Christopher, or Faunt is really engaged with the fan-
Yeah, him and Brienne really dug in some numbers.
That fan group, too, with the families that already have problems.
What's interesting is, I've had to, Oakland County, I'm having trouble, so I keep records. Police chief keeps records, or the police department does, and then Oakland County. What I can't get is the numbers to match. So still trying to get a real number, but I can tell you that I believe, since we've gone back to 2015, there was about a 10% to 12% increase until last year, and then it escalated. I believe the police department's using it, if I was to guess, at least once a month, the Narcan.
Yeah. I just think that Chris has an awful lot of innate information from families that are suffering from, family members that are going through it. They probably have a great deal, like cues that people should look for and that can be passed along to keep your eyes open for parents, so.
And that's what's tough for, for my staff, and I think for Chris's staff, for Chief Solvik's staff, is they're young. They're parents, or they're young, and it's just been-
It's crazy.
Actually, it's been all ages, but it's this youngness. The last one we had, really, I noticed, was tough. And that's where it kind of triggered something in my head. I said, let's just look into the numbers, and that's where we stand today.
It's pervasive and broad spread. I mean, it's not just kids. I mean, it's-
Oh, it's, it's a wide range.
Yeah, right. Yeah, terrible. Well, thanks for that help.
Thanks, Chief. Anyone else? Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you so much for having a truck there at the depot day.
Yeah, it was good.
The little kids just love it, okay, and it makes a big impression on them, and they-
It was one of our better ones. The, my staff told me, firefighter Noshal said it was one of the more engaging ones. He said a lot of you all stopped in, and they thought it was great.
Who doesn't like a fire truck?
Busy weekend. We did the football game. We did depot days. Busy.
All right. Thanks, Chief. Yeah. Chief Solvik?
I have one of our officers. Sergeant Michael Witrock is going to be leaving law enforcement here at the end of October to pursue a business adventure with his father. He's, he has an MBA, and he's been kind of tinkering with these things for the last number of years, and the right opportunity came along for him. So we're gonna miss his leadership and his presence after 17 and a half years. Sergeant Sean Hoerig will be stepping into the sergeant role on the eligibility list, and I've got the authorization to pursue another officer. So while we're gonna be missing Mike and what he brings to the police department, we're also gonna be hiring somebody, and the pay structure's gonna be different, so we're gonna be bringing somebody, losing someone at etape and bringing somebody in at the first step pay, and that officer's also gonna be going to the defined contribution plan. So as, as things happen and we start losing people, we'll replace them with, you know, good experienced young officers, so. But he will certainly be missed, his wittiness about him and what he brings to our police department, so.
Anyone with anything for Chief Solvik? Chief, I, I noticed you got the new patches on the shirt. That looks good.
We do.
It looks real good.
We, we were trying to set up an appointment. We have a shadow box for the creator, Dominic Albanis, and I don't know whether he's just a little too nervous to accept something in front of city council, but he has school on Monday evenings. And so we tried to schedule something during the holiday breaks, and he says, well, on the holiday breaks, I'm just, I'm only available on the weekends, so. But I'll bring the shadow box in here sometime soon. We'll get some pictures, and you ought to see him in the shadow box in the annual reports as well. So we're thankful that they did a phenomenal job with this, and we're thankful for the change.
Well, it looks good.
Could I hear special meeting call?
It'd be a challenge to try and get him. I think he's a little bit nervous about appearing before council, but we'll see what we can do.
All right.
Not that bad.
Thanks, Chief. Oh, yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Walton.
Chief Solvik, in our packet, there's a parade event application for the candy cane hunt that has been approved?
Yes.
Excellent.
Yes.
Great event for the kids. Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll move on to council comments. Councilmember Richards, why don't you go ahead and get us started this evening?
Okay, right off the bat. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to let everybody know that I'm gonna go through about four or five topics here, and gonna go real fast as best I can. Number one, I just want to let everybody know the cemetery is looking much better. It's great, improved. The seven gentlemen that work up there have been taking care of it through the summer. The holes are filled. The damaged vandalism items have been repaired. There are others that are broken and damaged, but they are not a result of that vandalism, something years before. And the gardening on the Far East End, the gardens were smaller this year, but they've been well-kept, and they've, they're getting harvest time. And anyway, it's been a worthwhile effort for a lot of people in the community. And it's always a place for the deer to get a snack. That's why they hang around both ends of the place. I just want to say something about the lady's comment about the green, the green building in Lafayette Street. 113 is the name of the building. Art Craft was the name on the store. I've taken pictures of it and along different phases of the development of the renovation of it, okay. And I was over there and walked, walked over and held up the curtain a little bit and with my cane and looked in the inside, and you can't see much because it's blocked off. What they're using to remove the paint, okay, and is walnut and a mixture of plastic pellets, okay? Walnut shells and little plastic beads is what is used in, in that type of sand blasting to not injure the bricks and other types of paint that's, that's in that. And that's what they're doing right now in the front. And the back end is, part of the back end's been taken off, and it's gonna be a separate entrance built back there eventually. Anyway, move on to the next item here. I want to say something about our bookkeeper, Patricia. No, she's not, she's our accountant, I guess. I shouldn't say bookkeeper of it. Anyway, she's, the statement we got with the bill paying is arranged a little differently, and I'm always aware of that because of my eye problems, okay, to visually see something and read it. And I just got a new pair of glasses, which I haven't had in two years, and I've been going through it, and it, I, it's a little bit easier to read and figure out the exact nuts and bolts of every detail. And I'm gonna get used to it as we go along. And I thank Patricia for her innovation and taking over the office. Also, the last item I want to mention is Depot Day. You can't say enough. I'd be going on five minutes with that. Just, just let us say that this was the greatest one we've ever had. The attendance was well over 500, probably close to 700, okay? There were no accidents. The Kiwanis never ran out of food. There was food there the whole time. The Kiwanis kept pouring the burgers and the hot dogs right across the grill all the time. And it was, it was, and pop, too. They had plenty of pop. It was, it was great, okay? And there was stuff there that I had never seen. And I gotta mention one thing. We had a, we had a vendor from Dexter that had an, an early hit-and-miss gas-powered engine that was before automobiles, okay, and it powered a railroad car, a small railroad car, that went up and down the tracks for maintenance. And- And he had an excerpt of a copy from an 1886 Detroit newspaper called the Daily Observer or something, I guess, and there was a historical account of a train wreck in South Lyon that I'd never seen or heard of before in my research of the historical records of this town. And that is my role and function with the Historical Society. Research and development is my area. And when I read that, I took pictures with my camera, and I'm just absolutely flabbergasted that nobody...it's never been an account of anything that I heard of, that we had a train wreck where there was one fatality right here in the vicinity of town, and it involved the grand trunk at the time. Anyway, with that, I'll pass. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Councilmember Walton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have several things I'd like to bring up tonight, and usually we know that I really like to spotlight Act of Faith and things that are happening over there, so that's where I'm going to start tonight. And I'm going to thank Cook Automotive and their generous food donations. What a great team effort they did. I believe they brought in three or four grocery carts full of food that they all donated. Nancy Byington, she is a local author who wrote a children's book called Grandma Visits the Detroit Zoo. Her son was the illustrator. They dropped off a book to Act of Faith to donate. It was just a great little book. Looks like Oak Point Church dropped off several boxes full of backpacks and school supplies. So, that's a wonderful thing. And I also want to bring up one little girl. I don't have permission to use her name. She is a minor, who held a lemonade stand in a garage sale and used the money to buy food for Act of Faith. I mean, these are just incredible things that happen in our community with everyone. But now that we're thinking about Act of Faith, let's also think about the upcoming holidays. Maybe consider adopting a family. If you can't adopt a family on your own, consider partnering with a neighbor, maybe doing something as a community in your neighborhood and adopting one or two families. It's just a great thing to do. It really...holidays a lot less stressful for those families, but also it really brings down the generosity of the season, so I just want to bring that up for a moment. And also, I want to, while we're talking about generosity, Michigan is now a no-kill state for shelter animals, and that is so exciting. And we have many rescue organizations that happen right here in the city of South Lyon, including Fury Friends Rescue, that can always be found at Pet Supplies Plus. So, it takes 90% of animals to be returned to owners or transferred to other shelters or rescues or to be adopted in order to be considered a no-kill state. So, that is amazing for our state. I also wanted to mention about Depot Days and how great of an event it was and all the little vibrant things that were happening up there. One of our city council members that are people running for council, Dana Johnson, was up there as a clown. I believe Lisa Dilch was up there also working. So, it's amazing, all the things that we see people doing. But going back to Dana for just a quick moment, she doesn't stop there. She did all the hay bales at Irwin's. She did the butterfly mural over at the Corner Cafe. It's just amazing, all the vibrant, colorful things that are going on in our city, and that's why I wanted to bring it up, because I also wanted to say to the cultural arts and how awesome it is to see all these...you know, you're driving by and you see the moon things or the paintings. It's great. It's bringing people to our city. It's bringing people to walk around our city and see what they can find. And honestly, I still see kids out there playing Pokemon Go, and all these things are check-ins for it. So, hey, whatever you got to do to get walking around, right? So, DPW, thank you. I see that you went over to the lot at Dorothy and McMunn. You filled in those treacherous potholes that I've been complaining about for two years plus, so I really want to say thank you for that. I also want to say thank you for cutting down the dead tree in the lot across from the witch's hat and the large wasp nest. Hopefully, nobody got hurt in the removal of that process, but it was great on the timing to get that done before Depot Days happened because that was a well-walked area and used for parking. Coach Smith and the cross-country team had another successful witch's hat run this past weekend, so, I mean, it was just a fabulous weekend to be out in our town. But I want to say something here for just a quiet moment. We have a vibrant community, and I love seeing the wonderful things that we do for each other. As we approach the anniversary of 9/11, I ask you not only to reflect on those that are affected by the actions that took place on 9/11, but I want you to think about how you can make a difference in the lives of those around you. Take a moment to make an extra donation at the grocery store or spend some time reflecting at the Veterans Rock. Reach out to those that are in need. Remember this: Your friends, your family, your community would rather spend hours talking to you on the phone than 15 minutes reading your obituary. That's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Walton. Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I would like to thank Keith Bradley for his service as a planning commissioner. I knew Keith personally. This is a tremendous loss for the planning commission. I remember being invited to Keith's wedding with him and Jackie. It was an outdoor wedding. It was absolutely gorgeous, and I wish them the best of everything. Good luck to you, Keith, and we'll be thinking of you, that's for sure. I would like to remind everybody that Pumpkin Fest is just around the corner. You can still volunteer. I ran into Kathy Swan over the weekend, and what was Kathy Swan doing? She was volunteering for another organization. I don't think Kathy Swan sleeps...I really don't. I couldn't believe she was working on another organization, which I'll talk about later after Pumpkin Fest. But what I do want to say is, please don't forget about the pumpkin pie baking contest. Also, what I would like to do is, because I've been a very strong advocate for fighting substance abuse, I would like to thank our governor, Governor Whitmer, for her working very, very hard in ensuring that we have a new administrative order, which is now going to ban flavored vaping. I was on the forefront on this several years ago, and I will continue to be on it. I think it's important to understand that colored vaping is made with product that does come from China, and I think we need to be aware that they don't have an FDA like we do. So, please thank our governor. It is a health crisis, and she was the first one in the nation to do this, so I want to thank her. We do have a labor shortage that we are experiencing locally, and I would like to highlight three great businesses who are looking for super employees. Please stop by Aubrey's. They're looking for work. Tuffy Tire and Auto, boy, are they busy. What a great place there on Pontiac Trail. They're looking for a certified mechanic. Next, stop in and see Doug Gambi. He's the manager. He'll be able to help you. Also, South Lyon Collision is looking for someone in the community to assist, and he's looking for a general laborer. And stop in and see Gary Fagan. I really think that this weekend that I spent on the west side of the state with the union gentlemen, they're just a brilliant group of guys. I think it's real important to understand that the trade individuals probably have a better math skill than anybody sitting here in the room tonight. The gentlemen that are carpenters, that are electricians, they have a great background in physics and science. Pipe fitters have a phenomenal background in math. These are great, great individuals with phenomenal skill sets. And one thing that I learned, that I probably knew about, but they articulated it very well, is automation. Try to automate a pipe fitter's job. Try to automate an electrician's job. Try to automate a carpenter's job. These jobs are secure, secure employment, and they are great-paying jobs. So, please keep your eyes open and don't be afraid to walk into the community and look for some of these jobs, South Lyon Collision and Tuffy Motors. Also, I want to bring up, that I also do work in my private practice, is elder abuse prevention, and there is going to be a town hall that is coming up, and I want to get this out. It's going to be on September 30th at the Novi Public Library from 10:00 to 11:30. It's being hosted by Senator Jim Runstead, and it's going to be joined by Attorney General Dana Nessel. And I haven't met Dana Nessel yet, and so I'm looking forward to meeting her, and she's going to be there for this event. So, please, this is a great, great event for anybody who is an elder or in care of an elder. Please attend this seminar. I think it's going to be really good. Next, we have Dr. Ray coming to St. Joseph's Church, and this is going to be on Saturday, September 15th, for a conversation with the community regarding parenting. The parenting segment is on Saturday. The doors open at 6:15, and Dr. Ray starts this conversation with parents at 7:00. Anybody can attend. Last and most importantly, and I would like to tail onto Councilwoman Walton, Wednesday is September 11th, and I hope everyone will find some time to remember those persons who unexpectedly lost their lives. I remember where I was on that day. I remember who I called, and I remember what my dad said to me. My dad said, "I love you." There's a ceremony that is going to be held at the Michigan Fallen Heroes Memorial up in Pontiac at 6:00. Local programming on the History Channel will carry a lot about it, but the most important thing that you do on that day, is sit with the people that you love, say a prayer, be nice to somebody, remember the events of 9/11, and get on your knees and be thankful that it wasn't you. Be thankful it wasn't you. So, God bless every one of them. Good night. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think in the interest of accuracy, let's talk about the erroneous comments made by the mayoral candidate. He states that "I've taken full credit for various activities that have occurred. Nothing could be farther from the truth." Here are the statements contained on my campaign flyer. Worked with the South Lyon Fire Department to obtain the life-saving Lucas CPR device at no cost. Worked with the South Lyon DPW to replace the equipment, the backhoe and snow removal truck. Assisted the South Lyon Water Department with the water tower renovation and the graphic design. Worked with the South Lyon Fire Department to provide free smoke detectors and carbon monoxide alarms to the residents. Each item listed was a collaborative effort between this council member and the various departments. That is exactly how each statement reads. How novel that a council member reached out, worked with the city departments for the benefit of the city and its residents. With regard to the graphic design for the water tower, absolutely, Ken Mahalik from the Cultural Arts did design the graphic that is on there. That was then provided to the city council members for their review and input. Two members from the council said it looked good. Four members from the council provided no feedback. I provided additional feedback to Superintendent Mike Bovin, and that was included in the graphic. There was a discussion about the font size and exactly what it's going to look like. I added the established 1873 to the graphic because I thought it needed to be highlighted, how old the city is and how long it's been there. Further, I worked with the fire chief, with the police chief, with the DPW superintendent, and the water department chief engineer in drafting each of those statements and obtaining their approval before including it in my flyer. In fact, the mayoral candidate took the information to Chief Vogel this afternoon. He verified that statement exactly, and then that mayoral candidate proceeds to come here and provide false information tonight. The innuendo, baseless allegations, and outright lies on the part of the mayoral candidate should perhaps cause the voters to think long and hard and decide if those are the characteristics they want in an individual representing our great city. For a candidate who has stated he treats everybody with absolute respect, I would say his actions speak louder than words. So, for the mayoral candidate, if you want to be mayor, as you've already said, perhaps honesty is very important. And as has been said before, do your homework to the residents and the voters in the city in preparation for the upcoming election, and pay attention to who you're truly voting for. And now on to more important things. This Friday, September 13th, there'll be another movie in the park. This week, they'll be featuring the movie Ralph Breaks the Internet, rated PG. It starts at dusk in McCady Park. I also want to congratulate the Salem-South Lyon District Library for a successful summer reading program that included 1,430 children, teens, and adults participating in the reading program compared to the 897 that participated last year. And finally, at last count, the library currently has about 87,000 print and media items available as well as access to another 882,000 digital downloadable items available for the residents of our community. Just a great job providing a wealth of services for its patrons. All right, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Parisian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple things. Thank you to DPW, Fire, and the police for helping keep things running smoothly this weekend. This weekend was busy, and the downtown looked beautiful. So, thank you for keeping things going and keeping things smooth. I feel like we don't give you guys enough credit, so thanks to all of you. Secondly, thank you to Keith Bradley. Keith Bradley put in a lot of time and effort and years of service to the city of South Lyon, and I wanted to be stated for everyone to know who he is and what he did for this community, and his time on the planning commission was cherished, so it is a loss for the city of South Lyon. But thank you for the time that you did put in here. It was valued, and best of luck to you in your future endeavors. Third, Pumpkin Fest still needs volunteers. This is mantra number one, volunteer. I know I always say it, but volunteer for everything that you can in the community. That's how you get to know people. That's how you network. That's how you really get to understand our downtown and value our downtown. But for Pumpkin Fest, it's just around the corner, and they still need help with cleanup. So, if families could just take a minute to help out, or if you are part of the National Honor Society, and if you help, they will provide documentation that could go toward earning points, toward your activity with the National Honor Society. So, keep that in the back of your mind. And also, if you are participating in Pumpkin Fest, be sure to go to the website and check out where you need to be, timing, location, all of that fun stuff, just so that you're prepared day of. Again, continue to volunteer, and thank you to Sergeant Witrock.
Witrock.
Witrock, thank you. Time, effort, energy, years of service, and it's a loss, but best of luck to him and his next adventure, and thank you. And last but not least, my new mantra. Got a second one, guys. Do your research. Do your homework. Find out who these candidates are, who's running, what do they stand for, who do they best advocate for what you believe in? Have you had the opportunity to meet them? If not, go to the meet and greets. There's one on September 24th for council, I believe, where there's going to be questions that'll be asked, and individuals from the community will be able to ask questions. So, you should go and get a feel for, does this person align with my values? There will also be one for the mayoral candidacy on the 26th of September. So, mark your calendars. Go to the meet and greets. If they swing by your door, open the door. Don't slam it on them. Open the door, and just be receptive, be open-minded. And even if you have differing views, it's nice to be challenged. It's nice to have a healthy discussion about what it is in the community you're looking for and what you need to see in a candidate. And like I said, if you are an individual who already sits on council, you're an incumbent, make sure you're looking at your incumbents as well, because there's some excellent candidates out there that are not incumbents. So, look at those individuals, but also if you're, you know, a constituent looking to vote, keep your mind open to the incumbents. Go back and watch the videos. Who works well on council? Who's a team player? Who's an obstructionist? Look and see what individuals have worked hard to make things happen and progress the city forward. I can't say enough how important that is. And if you have any questions, don't hesitate to ask me. I've gotten a lot of emails and questions already, but my response is always, "I'm not going to tell you who to vote for. You can make your own decisions, but make sure you do your homework and they align with your views." With that being said, thank you and have a wonderful night.
Thank you, Councilmember Parisian. Councilmember Kivell?
Well, a lot of what I had to say has been covered pretty thoroughly. The Depot Days, we caught a great break. It was terrific weather. It was very well-attended. My wife and I and our dog ended up walking up into the park, and as we were approaching, we were kind of concerned because they have this little train that the kids get a ride in, and it's a real big hit for the kids. And we didn't see it, and as it turned out, it was actually on the south side of the park where we had seen it before, more in some of the northern areas. So, everybody was happy. Blaine Smith had his tractor out there. I mean, all these really kind of touchstones from 39 years of Depot Days. So, it was very cool. The beekeeper was there. The train guys were there. It was just very nice. And I did run into Kathy Swan there as well, and she had kind of parroted what Mary had said, that they're really looking for volunteers for teardown, for work during the course of the event. of the event. Any help that might end up, that you might have an interest in coming up for, they'd be more than happy to help put you to work. So please, 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 go and give some assistance. I, one of the questions I, I should have asked when Bob was here was for the Art Craft Building. You know, with it being all tented up, it was sort of difficult to, to understand what was going on, but the, the paint removal does make perfect sense. I did want to end up giving my thanks to Keith. I know that he's enjoying his retirement substantially. I see endless photos on Facebook of them traveling all over the Doggone Place and some of the nicest-looking meals. He's one of those guys that takes pictures of all of his meals at restaurants, and some of them look pretty doggone good. So he was a very nice man, is a very nice man, and I really appreciate all the, the time that he's put in for this, this community. He was around when some of the most consequential things had taken place around here. So we, we owe him a great deal of gratitude. And Mike Witrock, he's such a nice guy. Just got his sergeant stripes. I was really sorry to see that. So, and not his stripes, but he's moving on. Yeah, he was a very nice fellow. I met him very early on and he was a good, one of the good, well, we, all of our guys are really cool, so. But it's, it's just a shame to see somebody that's been around that long, you know, find something that he thinks could compete with being a cop in South Lyon. I think, I think I've said enough. That was, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kivell.
Hey, you know what? Could I just?
Yes.
People have brought up the 9/11 thing and clearly, everybody, it's, it's an event that will never leave people's minds. I have the misfortune of, that's my wife and I's anniversary. So it's really got this, it's cool in that I try to dwell on the fact that we're married and we've had such a great life together with our kids and everything, but it's sort of hard to lose sight of the fact of what it, what other tragedies have taken place on that, that day. So it, it's a nice thing in that you can, it, it gives me a great deal more sense of just how fortunate we are and, you know, so we try to look on the upside of that. So I'm sorry.
No, no, thank you. That was a good addition, Councilmember Kivell. I just have a couple thank yous and a welcome to Sergeant Witrock. Best of luck and thank you for your service to our great community. The same with Keith Bradley. 15 years, I bet you if you asked him, and I'm sure there were ups and downs, but when you get involved in something like that, in a community like ours, you have a hard time walking away from it. And so Keith, thank you for everything and best of luck down there in the South, and we'll keep tabs on you on the old Facebook for sure. One last thing tonight, if you haven't noticed, we've had a slight transition here with our city attorney, and I want to thank Tim Wilheim. Tim, Tim was a pro's pro, and we wish him all the best in his new endeavors. And I'd also like to welcome Lisa as our new city attorney and welcome to the city of South Lyon and, and welcome to the team. So thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll look for a mo, oh, go ahead. Yes, Councilmember Parisian, go ahead.
I completely forgot about Tim. I wasn't at the last meeting when he had his goodbye. Did we say goodbye?
Well, we didn't know it was going to be his last meeting for sure either, so go ahead.
Well, it might not be.
Okay.
He's left himself open and in fact, he emailed me today saying he looked at the agenda and doesn't think it's anything that he needs to come for, but if there's something in the future, he's happy to come. So if you guys want to put some contentious issue on for next line. I'm sure he'll be here.
Well, just in case, I, I do want to say that, I mean, Tim, Tim has been here for so long, so many years, and it is hard to walk away from something like that. Best of luck to him in Ann Arbor and thank you for all the years of service that you put in, Tim. And I know you were an excellent mentor to me when I was going through law school, taking the bar exam. I couldn't have, you know, said more wonderful things about Tim and to this day can't say more wonderful things about him. An excellent attorney, he was an asset to the city of South Lyon, and there were some meetings where he would take a beating and he would take it with grace. He was a very classy, and still is a very classy gentleman and an excellent, excellent attorney. Thank you for all your service.
I'd also like to say some positive things about Tim. And Lisa, I think I already told you, I had friends that applied for that job down in Ann Arbor, and so I knew that the job was available. And so when the announcement came that, that Tim was the one that got it, I told my friends, I said, well, I happen to know the individual. So they, they made sure that they watched the next couple of city council meetings because they wanted to see who, who got this incredible job. I mean, he had, he got a, a opportunity of a lifetime to be able to work nine to five. It's not going to be nine to five, but it's a, it's a great job in a great town, and I talked to Tim about it, it's only two miles away from work. He, he got a gem of a job. So he's well-earned it, and I told the individuals that were asking about it, I said, he's a brilliant attorney and you can see why he got selected. So he's on his way to just a great, great career in Ann Arbor. Yeah.
Move to adjourn?
Yes, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Have a great night, all.[1797.26][1797.26]